This conference will now be recorded.
First thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, any issues, or any additions to the agenda as presented?
Move to approve.
I will second. So we got a motion by Rick Siler, second by Chuck Nicolai to approve the agenda as presented. We'll do a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye. So the agenda is approved as presented. First thing, I guess we'll let Chris do his little update before he goes into the American Legion at Montgomery. Or?
Yeah, I got a council meeting after the, for Montgomery here.
Oh, okay.
So I'll give you an update. Obviously, so they are working. I like to reiterate that why it doesn't look like there's a lot happening because it's just confined in one location. There was a lot of critical work happening down there. Last week, they did get the first casing in under the railroad, the water main casing, and they did get the water main pipe in. The pipe is ready to be connected to when they can be, when they can be, begin that utility work. Today, this week, they, today they were getting set to move over to where they have to install the sanitary sewer casing in the middle of the road. So they're in the process of digging that pit and getting their, their box set up and their rails and getting ready to basically start to install that casing. So I, we would expect that by the end of this week, they'll have the sanitary sewer casing and pipe in. Again, nothing will be connected, anything yet until they can begin the utility work to follow up. So just the pipes get, get fed through. Next week, they'll be actually shifting over to the other side of the railroad, to the east side, and digging a jacking pit over there to help and to basically to install the large 58-inch steel casing that's part of the storm sewer pipe that'll have to be installed. That's a little bit more intensive operation. If you can imagine, 58 inches is actually what they consider tunneling. So they'll begin that, get started with that next week, and they expect that to take probably about a week or a little bit more. At the same time, they'll also probably get started with the utility work after next week on that west side of the track. So between there and Trunk Highway 21, they'll get started first with the sanitary, then follow up with the water main, and then by then the storm casing and pipe will be in, and they'll start with the, follow up then with the storm pipe from the creek up to the railroad tracks. So yeah, probably in the next couple of weeks, it'll start to look a lot like more is actually happening because again, what's there is really underground and underground crossing work. So I know they got the park seeded today, finally. I think the conditions were finally right and that, that work got done. So they are done, done in that area. Any questions?
Well, I did notice, Chris, this is Chuck, I did notice that they seeded the whole area there, and I always thought that was kind of strange since, I don't know when they're going to start with the Veterans Memorial, but they kind of seeded that area too. So, but that's fine.
Yeah, well, yeah, and that's a requirement of our erosion control plan. So that's just a requirement by MPCA. Even though it would be considered temporary, it has to be covered and covered and seeded. So.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Chris regarding the project, Main Street project on the west end? Okay, if not, Chris, thank you very much. Say hi to all our friends over there in Montgomery for us.
Will do.
Wish them well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
So next on the agenda is, looks like we have an appointment of a couple new firemen based on a retirement and a, Tom Ewart is resigning. So.
Yeah, he resigned.
Yep. Mike, are you taking this?
Yeah, that you've got the memo from Fire Chief Jeremy Takowski on his, on his and the staff's recommendation to hire two new young firemen, Zach Dubinowski and Charles Flecheck. You can see his memo a little bit on their working backgrounds, and they have completed their interviews and everything associated with the process, with the exception of where I added as part of my memo in the council's consideration of the approval tonight. It needs to be conditioned upon their successful passage of a drug and alcohol test by each of the applicants. We're no longer able to get that done over in Northfield as we always have been, and are trying to work with the Mayo Hospital system to, to see if we can get that done here in New Prague. And as of tonight, we want to recommend approval of the hiring, but with that condition.
Okay. I guess, you know, again, we seem to have, be very fortunate to have people that are willing to serve on the fire department. So that's always a plus. We've never had an issue. So that's great. So anyone have any questions for Mike if he can answer them?
No.
How long will it take for the drug test and stuff to be done? Then if we don't know that, I mean, can't they just go to an align clinic and get her done?
We, we have to kind of coordinate this because they don't do the final testing part of it. Mostly that testing gets sent out. And so I don't know what it's going to entail now that we've lost our abilities to have gotten that done in Northfield. And I talked with the interim hospital administrator last week, and so we're hoping to find a way to get that done so that we can keep that process as much of it in town as we can.
And, and Mike, I noticed that the Parkview Clinic does Minnesota, you know, Min dot physicals or something along those lines. So they could possibly be a backup. It would surprise me if Mayo doesn't do something, but I was just thinking that I saw that Parkview had advertised that they do those types of physicals.
We're, we're going to check that as well, that we do our physicals through the Parkview Clinic. And it will always have since I've been here. But again, neither one of them had historically done that. So that's why we're now having to recheck that, you know, we only went to Northfield way back a number of years ago because neither Mayo nor Parkview did that.
Oh, the actual testing? Okay. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the two new appointees.
This is Maggie. I'll second.
Okay, so I made the motion, Mike. Maggie Bass seconded. So we'll do a roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye. So that appointments have passed 5-0 based on them successfully passing the drug test. So. Okay. Rolling right around. Next thing on the agenda, and I know Jim is on vacation. And Mike might be able to answer, Mike or Ken might be able to answer any questions if anyone has it. But this is the second reading of the new UTV class, what is it, class two? Class two ordinance. And if no one has any questions or issues regarding this, we can get this passed. It can be published in the paper this week, and then it goes into effect after it's published, is my understanding.
That is correct.
Does anyone have any comments to make on this?
I'll move it forward to John here.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean Ryan.
This is Maggie. I'll second.
And a second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll take a roll call vote. Rick? Rick?
Aye.
Okay, Maggie?
Aye. Aye.
Sean?
Is it working? Is it working?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye. So the ordinance, second reading passes 5-0. We'll get it published, right Patrick, in Friday, in Wednesday's paper, and it'll go into effect immediately. So too bad Jim isn't here, but I, you know, he did put a lot of work in, and I see Dan is also on, and Patricia, you know, I, you know, appreciate all the support you guys did in this and help getting it moved along. So looks like it should be a reality by the end of this week. So thank you for everyone.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Appreciate it much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the ordinance is the EDA request to spend some, allocate some money of the CARES money that is being given to the city. It's roughly $607,000. I know Mike and the department heads are kind of going through an inventory of items that this money could be used for. But in all indication from everyone, it's probably, we probably don't have $606,000 of expenses that are related to COVID. But part of the, the CARES Act, what is that, it can be used for economic development in support of businesses during the pandemic. Is that correct, Mike?
That is correct, Mayor.
So, so at the last EDA meeting, it, the resident, they had a motion to request, I think it was, what is it, $108,000?
Yes.
$108,000 to be set aside to do a program similar to what the Scott County CDA is doing. The problem, the Scott County CDA is a similar program where they give forgivable loans. And the problem with the Scott County one was it, people could apply, and then it was more of a lottery. And I think the last time I saw anything is there was only one business from New Prague that applied. The problem with the Scott County one is it was only valid for people on Scott County. So any businesses in La Sura County was not able to apply. So I think the, and Bruce, you can expound on that too, but I think the EDA looked at it as, it'd be nice to be able to use some of this money to benefit businesses that need help in the downtown area, or in, in the city of New Prague, because it'd be a shame to have businesses closed without this assistance and, and give the money back to the Treasury Department. Bruce, do you want to elaborate on any of that?
I think that's exactly true. I think once we determine how much money that's, that can, for COVID-related expenses, there may be a potential of adding more to it. But I think the strategy is to start out with this $108,000 and really try to get the money into the local economy. Hopefully it make a difference to people, but if nothing else, it will help to keep moving, money moving in the economy and being spent. So I think that's good that we have a program and that we act on it in timely manner because there is a timeline, and it has to be used by, I believe, November, December.
Bruce, Bruce or Chuck, I don't know which one wants to respond to this, but how did you arrive at the $108,000? And what about, who's going to determine which businesses? I'm all for it, first of all. I want to support our local businesses as much as we possibly can. I know a lot of them personally. I know they're struggling. They need some help. But, you know, one, how did, where did you come up with this $108,000? And then who's going to be the one that's going to determine which business gets what and how much? Because obviously, there's some businesses that did much better than others during this time. For example, Coburn's, you know, more shopping, sales were through the roof, whether it was on the liquor store side or the meat side or whatever else, as people bought up and, and were hunkering down in their homes. You know, how, how's it going to be disseminated? And who's going to be in charge of that? The EDA? Or is that going to come from the council? Or you guys could elaborate on that?
You want me to try to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Well, we've got a bad, can you turn off your microphones to avoid the, that it might be beneficial to others? We started with about $100,000, Sean, and that's basically trying to pull something out of the air, out of the 600,000 that we have. So it's a, just a dollar amount there. The 8,000 part of it is that because we don't have enough staff to administer or handle the program, we checked with the Scott County CDA on who they worked with and what they did to create their program to ensure that it was compliant with the requirements from the CARES Act. And so what you have is something that has been pre-assembled already, based on what was done or is being done in Hennepin County. And Scott County CDA used a local nonprofit that brings a lot of experience in managing and administering loan funds called Next Stage. And so the cost for us to contract with them is about $6,000 per the $1,000 as far as their administrative charge to help assemble the applications, the review, the loan items. And remember, this is intended to be a one-time emergency forgivable loan, and the tentative proposal is at about $5,000, and that it ends up being a zero interest 12-month deferred payment. So it ends up being a grant if, if they comply with the terms. And we put all of the requirements that I think will answer many of your questions in your packet under the outline of the Small Business Recovery Fund guidelines that came from Scott County on pages 17, 18, and 19 on this agenda item. But the intent as far as who we're trying to target with this is on the bottom of page 17, who the eligible businesses are. And so no, we're not trying to hit the, the larger entities, that it has to be locally owned and operated for-profit business, the physical establishment. In our case, we would put the city of New Prague, that it has to employ between three to 20 W2 employee eligible employees prior to March 1, and be under a million in annual revenue, must have been operating for at least six months prior to March 1, basically be in good standing, no delinquent taxes, and then has to demonstrate a significant loss in revenue since, since March 15. And then it goes to, when, when you go up, if you go up above, that the, the funds that can be used, can be used for operating expenses, including current payroll obligations, rent payments, mortgage payments, utilities, those kinds of things. But the intent was, or then the other part of the 6,000, the other 2,000 was an administrative charge that they would charge us to redo all of the computerized application materials and those documents that go with handling and restructuring all of the loan. The application process, we'd identify a time period that they came, come in from. They would be evaluated on page 19. Are the, are required to submit certain information with their application. And if it's determined that they meet the eligibility criteria, the Scott County CD was trying to do $25,000 loans is what they were trying to do. And they did that through basically just a lottery system. So it wasn't an administrative picking of anybody, but it was a lottery process. My intent, should the council generally agree with this tonight, is to ask this to go back to the EDA, for them to take a look at it, that we've got a retired banker, we've got two other bankers involved, you know, we've got a CPA involved, is to take a look at this and take a look at the community, and what slight modifications or changes would we have to do. Now, there's, there's no premise here that we're going to take care of solving all of the downtown business or any of the small businesses, total economic challenges that they're facing or have faced. It's an opportunity to, to attempt to do something with monies that we're getting from the feds, passed on to the states, now passed on to us. Now, I did hear from discussions today with our counterpart cities in Scott County that Shakopee is going to throw in about 200,000, and they're going to do 15K per business. It sounds like Jordan is going to follow, and they're going to do the same thing. They've pretty much mimicked the Shakopee program at 200K, at 15,000 per business. Prior Lake is looking at about 100,000. They're going to their council next week. Elko New Market is not certain that in their review of their monies, that they'd have anything available. I did not hear anything on Bell Plain. Savage is going to throw $100,000 into the program as well. So that's kind of what's happening around us. So, you know, this is trying to take something and create it with as minimal upfront expense and creativity that we have to, where we've got a program that's essentially already put together.
Well, again, it goes back to this lottery system though, too. You know, we're not a Shakopee. We, we don't have probably a tenth of the local businesses that they do. And for them to put 200,000 in and then say they're going to give $15,000 loans out to people over and above whatever they get on the county side, doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of businesses that could be, that'll be left out of this lottery system.
Well, I think, I think you have to look at this is that, you know, this is an attempt to provide some money and some funding. It's not going to completely solve all problems for all people.
I totally get that, Mike. I'm just wondering if, you know, if we should be in more control of it on the local business. And I didn't mean to imply that the EDA certainly doesn't have a vast, a vast wealth of experience on that board. I've sat on it until a year or two ago myself. There was, I think, the world of all those guys. And I know they want to do something. It just goes back to that, you know, some guy on First Street gets a loan and a guy on Third Street doesn't get a loan because it's in a lottery. And I know, you know, it's not going to solve all their problems, but $5,000 to the guy on Third Street that just got 86th could help them. Maybe it gets them through the next month. Maybe that just covers a couple of bills so that he doesn't get foreclosed on, or whatever it might be. So I, it's the lottery thing that concerns me. And then putting our money into a program that might work good for Shakopee in some of the bigger cities in Scott County, but not necessarily for Main Street, New Prague. I'm sorry, I'm a little skeptical on it, but I just, you know, I would much rather see, and this was just all thrown at me on yesterday afternoon when I finally opened up the pen. You know, I mean, so it's, and I know that times of the essence. I know we can't sit and dilly-dally around trying to figure out the perfect thing because it's not going to be. But I'd like to hear from the other council members too, on whether or not we're just going to go with this blanket lottery thing that Scott County's throwing out there, and, and hope that it just helps a few, or if there's a way that we can spread it out a little bit more and, and look at more detail for people that are truly struggling.
Sean, I think you're missing something here. We've never, I mean, that's what Scott County's doing. CDA is doing a lottery.
Right.
We didn't, we have, really haven't laid out if we're going to do a lottery now. If we only get 10 people, and then we don't have, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah. No, I understand that, Chuck. I just thought that's the way Mike made it sound, is we were going to follow the CDA, we're hiring one of their people to, we're, we're following their guideline or their, their program that they have. I just want to make sure that we're not moving too quickly and just saying, oh, yep, this is the thing that's going to work. So you're absolutely right, Chuck. If we only get 10 businesses, that's great. Maybe we have enough for $10,000 per business instead of five. I think that's wonderful. But I just wanted to make sure and clarify and give my two cents worth that, you know, the EDA sitting there rubber stamp something that maybe I don't agree with, or other businesses don't agree with, and that I'm going to hear from. So you're absolutely right. I jumped the gun a little bit. I made an assumption there, but it just seemed like, based on what Mike was saying, that was the direction that the group was going.
Well, because they had the numbers. I don't know, they had what, Mike, 20, no, 40 some things, applications or?
The, the applications closed on Friday. We got an update today. There were 84 applications received from across the county. 69 were determined to have been eligible, and there were only, out of that eligible group, only three from New Prague. And so now what they're going to do after they've determined the eligibility is obviously, you know, how do you, how do you take a look at that in trying to answer your question, Sean? How would you propose other than some type of blind lottery drawing where you've got 69 eligible businesses from across the county are eligible to receive that? They can fund up to 20 at $5,000. How would you go about picking and choosing who those individual businesses might be?
Well, that was New Prague, but you were referring to Shakopee, which threw $200,000 in, right?
No, that's a different program.
No, the program I'm referring to and talking about is the Scott County CDA took 200,000 of their own money out of their funds to do this program.
Okay.
What I was trying to say when I went through before is that in taking a look at it is that I don't know the specific details of what the Shakopee program is going to look like. What I was trying to compare is that our EDA has asked for the 100,000 with 8,000 to handle the administrative costs to be able to contract with the entity that is not part of the Scott County CDA. They're a nonprofit entity that has experience in managing and administering loan fund programs. But Shakopee, instead of the 100,000 that we have, they're going to try to take 200,000 of their CARES Act and allocate it at $15,000. Well, you can take a look at that. It's pretty easy to figure out how many businesses they're going to be able to fund at 15,000 apiece out of 2,000, 200,000. What are you going to get, six to seven?
Exactly. Well, in that situation, yes. But I, all's I'm saying is, is that I would like to know a little bit, and as elected official, I think I deserve to be, have my input heard, and I would like to hear the whole plan as you guys move forward. So.
You know, I was, this whole CARES Act thing, the abilities to try to do this, has been thrown on our table pretty much overnight. We don't, we don't profess or pretend to know what this is ultimately going to look like. By getting the general approval from the council tonight on the dollar amount was to take what was just used by the Scott County CDA back to the EDA for further conversation to see what modifications or tweaking or amending we ought to do before we go forward with trying to do something.
Right. And I'm all for the money and the initial money part of it. I just want to be part of the final solution when the EDA, I'm just not going to rubber stamp 108,000 of this money and let the EDA decide how it's going to divvy it up. I think at least, and I know that there's two council members on the EDA, but I'm pretty sure the other two, along with me, might want to have some say in it as well. And I just want to make sure that that's ultimately what we're going to do.
Well, I hope, I hope you read what was in the materials in your council packet, and maybe can pass it on to the EDA members.
And, and this is Maggie. Sean, I'm all for the money as well. And I think maybe those are good questions for the EDA to ask this next stage, since this is what they do, is administer these types of loan programs or forgivable loan programs. Maybe there is other ways to make the determination of who gets that money. Right now, we're only looking at what Scott County is doing, and they're going with a lottery system. Well, maybe we can hear more about other methods of distributing that money. But I also want to say that with the amount of overall money that we've gotten from the CARES Act, $100,000 might not go far enough. $100,000 might not go far enough. And I would like to put out on the table that we reserve an additional $100,000 for the potential of helping the economic development of New Prague or helping them, you know, recover. Because it sounds as if, Michael, you had mentioned that with the amount of money we're receiving, we might be in a situation where we're not going to spend it all. And then of course, it goes back to the Treasury Department. I really think that money belongs in New Prague and I think our businesses have been hurt during this situation. I would like to reserve an additional 100,000.
You know, Maggie, we did, this is Chuck. We did talk about, we really didn't know because we really didn't know how much money the city was going to need.
Right.
But we, we felt comfortable with 100,000. And I think Bruce, you and I, you know, during that meeting, we even said if there's 300,000 available, let's utilize it all to help businesses. But we didn't want to.
Yeah, very much so. I agree.
And then all of a sudden you approve the number and then it affects maybe spending some of that CARES money elsewhere where it was needed. That's how we came up with, we felt comfortable that we were not going to have more, more than $500,000 of CARES money needed in the other departments of the city.
Right. And that, and that's my thought too, Chuck. So thanks for that clarification. I, I guess, you know, it still stands that I, I'm fully for the initial 100,000 plus the admin fee for, for next stage or whoever is, is hired to help with the dissemination of the money. But I would like to reserve an additional 100,000 so that if we're getting a lot of requests or maybe not as many, that maybe we can help the, the businesses even more than with $5,000. It's, I just think that this money is a big blessing to the city and I would love to see it used in support of the city.
Totally agree, Maggie.
My turn. All right, my turn. Hey, Sean, I, I kind of agree with your apprehension on that. And Maggie, I back you up on what you just said. I'm concerned that the money, how we distribute it is, is will be conceived or, you know, people are going to look at it and say, well, it was unfair, you know? I, it would be nice if we took that money and these businesses that are failing, those are places where you inject this stuff. I don't, I don't want to see any business close. So if, so if a business owner contacts us, I don't want to have to put him through this long application that he, and, and then in the end say, hey, you don't qualify. Sorry. You know, you could look through this and, and I, I'm just afraid that the, some of the, and I'm going to use the bars as an example. Their books aren't going to show what they really need and, and then they're going to turn around and have to close and they're done. And that ain't right. They're, they're suffering bad. They're trying to live under these rules and regulations that the government put on them. And I, and I know, Mike, just hold on. The money's got to go to the businesses that are failing. And, and that's the bottom line. I mean, otherwise the money's worthless as far as I'm concerned.
And, and Rick, I, I think having some sort of eligibility rules in place is important because I'm certain we're going to hear a lot of people in, with their backstory of what's happened to their business. Now, I'm not saying that this is all, all the cases, but some of that could be just straight mismanagement of money. So I think the fact that we need to look at tax returns, we need to understand what they lost because of this pandemic, that we have to set some, level set somewhere before we move an application forward. And, and I think that makes it fair for everyone that wants to take advantage of this potential program. So there, there has, has to be some ground rules in order to give a forgivable loan. And it, and it has to be the same ground rules for everyone applying. Otherwise, it could be a position of we're showing favoritism over one business over another. And we certainly don't want to be in that position.
I understand that, Maggie. But, you know, as a layman, I mean, you, you guys are all in the bureaucratic business or sector. As a layman, I look at that pack of paper and the requirements and stuff like that. And I, I don't know how these businesses deal with that. I, I wouldn't do it. I, if I was a contractor right now, I would be to say, forget it. I'll take care of it myself. And, but those guys don't have that option. And I look at somebody like the bar owners. They're begging us. We're, we're dying of all these regulations that we're trying to, trying to survive off of. And some of them are getting business, but they're having so much difficulties in the other areas. So they might not qualify under the bureaucratic system. So I'm just, I'm asking for just the ability that we, we can pick the people that are failing. I mean, I mean, let's, you know what I'm saying? There, there's a lot of regulations out there that they're trying to live under. This wearing a mask thing is killing them. There's no way for you to go into a bar and have a couple of drinks wearing a mask. So it's, I, I just hope that the bar owners get some of this. Restaurants do. When I say bar, I mean restaurants do, you know? How, how good is Fish Tale doing? Their numbers might look perfect, but they pay their payroll and look what happens. I mean, it only takes $15,000. You and all you guys are, are, you know, on the EDA are bankers and stuff. That's not really very much money.
Well, well, Rick, there's only really three, three items that are required. And again, this is just based on the Scott County document. This document is going back to the EDA for discussion and make the determination of what documentation will be required. So it's a federal tax return. It's evidence of revenue loss and evidence of employment. So it's not that arduous. You know, it's, it's probably easier to provide that information than it is to file our taxes every year. So I, I don't think it's unfair, but again, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. Right now, we're just having some discussion of providing the money. Yes, we agreed that the 108,000 and hopefully a reserve is some more money. Then it can go back to the EDA for discussion. It probably will then come back to council. And, and I hope by our next council meeting at minimum so that we can get this process rolling and we can get the money in the hands that, of those that need it.
I would recommend that the three of us sit in on that next EDA Zoom meeting, just so we can hear it. I mean, just because I, I know time is of the essence and I would hate, I mean, the meeting itself isn't until, what? August 12th? Is that the next one?
No, in, in all likelihood, depending on the council's approval tonight, would be to get in touch with the chair of the committee and call for a special meeting of the EDA so that we're not waiting till August 12th.
Okay. Will you, will you send me out the, the packet for that meeting as well beforehand? So I can see the agenda and I'd like to sit in on that meeting?
We can. I just have to be careful. If it's anticipated that we're going to have a majority of the council, Scott, I'm going to have to post that, am I not?
Yes, that's correct. You would.
Isn't the EDA posted anyways or not?
Yes. We only have the mayor and Bruce on there. If we get one more council member, then technically we have a majority of the council and I have to post that as a special council meeting.
Okay. I want to be there too.
Yeah.
Okay. That, i- i- if I could add and go back, and I think Scott would back me up on this, is that contrary to Rick's, your, your desire on how you'd like to see the monies handed out is we don't have the luxury of just looking at individuals or individual businesses without having a basis of attempting to make a decision in the process. I didn't include the application process. I think it's all of a couple of pages. So it's not an onerous issue to go through to be able to, to do this. But we have to have something so that we've got the basis in arriving at a decision on how we're going to award, that we're not acting arbitrary and capricious in how we're awarding that or there were not being discriminatory in that process. And so I think Scott would tell you that as we look at this, whether you like the terms and the outline of the way that the program is proposed, and they can be changed, we have to have something that guides us in how we go through this process. And then ultimately the selection so that we don't end up with somebody saying, well, Joe Schmo down the street, he got something and I didn't get anything. And we have no valid defensible position on how we arrived at that conclusion.
Right. I just, what I would like to do is the lottery thing.
There is no lottery.
Last choice.
Right.
If it even goes to a lottery, Chuck. Yes, I know. I just want to make my point.
We're putting the cart before the horse. We don't even know the demand yet. Until we hit natural applications, then we'll have an idea. But if we have so many applications, I think Scott County looked at it and said, the lottery is the most fair way of doing it, rather than a group of people saying, oh yeah, let's give it to this person and this person without any logic.
Yeah. No, and I, I understand the Chuck, Chuck, what you're saying. The cart is before the, the, the horse here for me. I just wanted my, my opinion heard by you and Bruce, that you can convey that to the EDA. I, I don't know if the lottery system is always the best. And I go along with Maggie in the sense that if we have more than 10 and we don't have it and we wanted to give $10,000 grants out to people, maybe we look for 200,000 so we can spread it out and everybody gets a grant, you know? That's all I'm saying is, you know, we start with 108. Let's look at it from there. I'll be in on the next meeting. I'd like to sit in on it. And I was a little skeptical, but I, I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood where at least I was coming from. And, and I figured that maybe, and Rick would also want their opinions given too, that it wasn't just handed over to the EDA to decide where this money was going to go.
Well, it was never.
Did I get in for a second?
It was never the intent that the EDA was going to hand out the money. It was always the intent that we were having a third party administer it, which is this group. So it was never the intent that you'd give the EDA the money and the EDA would, would sit there. That's why we're using the same group that Scott County's using.
Right. And that might work on a, on a countywide basis or with bigger cities in the county, but maybe it wouldn't be the best thing for the town of New Prague. That's all I was saying. I was just throwing out a little skeptic, skepticism there just because I, I, I've seen in the past that things at the state level that sound good might not translate good to rural counties versus metro counties and vice versa. So just because something worked good in Shakopee doesn't mean it was going to work good in New Prague. And that's all I wanted to make sure that you guys understood that. And I wanted to be part of the process. And I'll sit in on the meeting on the 12th or whenever it is.
Well, it won't be 12, it'll be sooner than that, but it's, it's, it's the deal, the group, go ahead, Bruce.
Just a comment on a couple of things. As you've said, others have said, timing is of the essence. So I, I do think we need to draw a little more clarification and try to move this ball forward. We're trying to, we have a very short window of opportunity here to deal with it. So timing is very important. So when Mike said we don't have the staffing, the other issue is the timing and the timing is of the essence here. When we refer to Scott County CDA, there's nothing magical, magical about Scott County that we pulled in Scott County. They happen to have this program that they've been working with previously. They were further ahead in this discussion and, and provided an outline that we could grab. But that's the reason that we're looking at Scott County because it provides a boilerplate for us to be able to look at as far as the basic outline that's already been determined to be in compliance with the federal regulations. So that's important because if we did it, it would take us a long time to start that ball and who's going to do that work? So it provides one that we think is already vetted and ready to go. When we talk about looking at this program and trying to make it something different, and I fully appreciate Sean, your comments about need and merit and trying to look at it and choose. But once we start down that avenue, it creates a whole different process and a whole different way of making it compliant with federal and state regulations. And how do we determine the process for determining who has more merit than another person? Unless we really dig deep into financial analysis and looking at it. And then we also would probably have a viability issue. Is this business going to be viable? So when you do a lottery, you're not looking at those things. And I just would strongly recommend that we stick with a lottery or some system like that that we don't slow down the process. Unfortunately, we don't, this all has to be out the door basically by the end of November. Money in their hands and in use. And certainly the sooner we get it to these businesses, the better off it is. I think it would be helpful if we feel that we want to, you know, affect more people. We talked about either making the awards larger or smaller or look at the size of the pool. Or look at this as phase one with an understanding there may be a phase two with another 100,000 or whatever it is. But I would, I, I think we need to continue down the road of a lottery or something similar like that so it doesn't slow down the process. Because I do feel when we have to go down a merit system or a need system, we're going to have more attorney work, more other work, more someone that has to approve the loan. In this sense, we don't have any staff or EDA or anyone going through the eligibility requirements. We have administrators doing that for us and we're paying them. So the process is streamlined. So I, I really support all the comments that are being made. I just want to make sure we have a sense of urgency about doing this. Specific things you want to see that we kind of take it out of the question and not have to come back again and come back again or even come back one more time. If we have to come back to another city council meeting, that, that automatically delays it again. So.
No, I totally agree, Bruce. I, I didn't look to muddy it up. I just, you know, I want to get some business owners' opinions around town. And like I said, I just got this packet. I was out of town Friday. So I just looked at it, glanced at it yesterday and read it this morning. So, you know, I'd like to see what their opinions are on things. And Chuck, to Chuck's point, we're right. We might only get 10 people that apply for this thing and, and we'll have plenty of money. If we get more than that, I'm so, fully support Maggie's side. Let's add another 100,000 to it. If we can expand it, maybe we can cover everybody then. But yes, I understand the urgency. I'll, whenever that next meeting is, I'll be on it. And if we need to have a meeting every Wednesday for the next four Wednesdays, I'll be part of it. So that's all I wanted to say.
And just to piggyback on your comments, Sean, as you talk to people about the program, whatever we do has to follow federal requirements. So the federal gives it to the state, the state gives it to us, and we're all responsible for compliance with it. So if we say, well, this business owner would like to see this and I want to have, I want to make sure bar owners get their first shot at it. Well, if the federal government doesn't allow that, we can't, we can't tweak, we can't tweak a lot of it. Like I said, this has already been vetted.
So just be, just be careful. Sean, just be careful.
Oh, go ahead.
Sean, I'm just saying, just be careful if you're talking to, to businesses that they understand that there is guidelines in the city doesn't have the authority to change those guidelines.
I'm going to give them this packet for review and I'm going to discuss it with them and let them.
That's fine. But as long as they know that we have guidelines that we have to follow to use this money for this purpose. That's all I'm saying is don't, don't promise anything we can't do.
No, I'm not promising anything, Chuck. I'm just going to show them what it is and see what, get some feedback from them. And again, if it's, instead of picking 10, we need to pick 20 and add more money to it, then that's what I want to do. So I get it. And it has nothing to do with the bars. Rick's saying the bars and restaurants. I've talked to other people that have, have other restaurants with outlier license that could use some help too. And, and I don't want to name other names because there's people that you'd be able to tell who they were. And I don't know if they want me to do that, but there's other businesses on Main Street than just bars and restaurants.
Do people have an opinion about the $5,000? Is that the limit number we want? Or is that a number higher, lower or?
You know, based on the discussions, you could try to take a look at it instead of the 5,000, that that's a nominal impact for the most part with the added monies that Maggie was suggesting that maybe be made available or set aside, maybe with that 200,000. Maybe we try to take a look at a goal of helping 20 businesses at 10,000 apiece. Maybe that has a better ring to it from that perspective.
But when are we going to know, Mike? When are we going to know how much of the 600, 6,000 is available?
We're, we're working on this absolutely as fast as we can internally. Um, we're, we're working on this absolutely as fast as we can internally. That if you try to take a look at what, let's see, it was page 15 in your packet of materials. You know, we were trying to, uh, begin to take a look at it. And again, we're having to answer internally as staff comes up with any suggestions. I just heard today that there may be a way that we can be reimbursed on some of our, uh, police salaries differently than I thought originally. And so I'm waiting for that because somebody got an opinion, uh, up the line that may be of interest to us. And so we don't even have that necessarily on the list. We've been working at this just as quickly as we can. We sat in on a, on a session with the League of Minnesota Cities here about a week ago, uh, trying to understand this program that Sean, and, and you acknowledging that you just got this on Friday to look at. We haven't had this any longer than what you have. And so we are trying to scramble that with getting the knowledge of this, how might we use it? What are the eligible and how can we put that list together to do our very best to capture as many of those dollars as we can, uh, before we have to turn any of it back. So we are absolutely moving as quick as we can. And that was why in trying to generally show you and the EDA about what was the program that had been vetted and put together, uh, at Scott County is that it's a way to help us again move quicker versus starting from scratch as, as Bruce had indicated. So, you know, we're, we're not sitting on this any more than, uh, what we're trying to share and get guidance and to kind of design on the fly, so to speak. So.
I, I understand, Mike. I didn't realize that you just got it as quickly as we did as well. So.
So, yeah, that it, I mean, this wasn't something that it, it basically dropped in our lap and our laps in kind of the last week and a half, uh, to two weeks. And so uh, when we just first kind of shared it with the EDA was to get an idea, uh, so that we could come in and go after a portion of the funds to try to help local businesses, uh, which is authorized under the CARES Act in the various funding categories.
Great.
Okay. Any other comments?
I would just ask
Yeah, I've been trying to get in on there. So I got a little procedural question for you. If we approve this, if we approve this, the money goes into the EDA. And then we can, um, 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 we're going to have the next EDA meeting. And, um, that's where it's going to be figured out and, um, go from there. And, and do we notify the public yet? Or do we wait until it gets to the EDA and then discuss it there? I, I'm a little lost at what we're going to do. I mean, we're just going to give the money to the EDA and then, then, then we're all going to meet at the next EDA meeting and then watch how it all gets distributed. What's the process here in that?
Well, I think the, the, the question it is, is I'm hearing from a, a number of you is that, uh, maybe, uh, EDA, you know, we don't just give the EDA the money and they get to go spend it. That, uh, in all likelihood, we will be the ones that will have to write it, uh, to write checks out as we contract with, uh, NextStage, uh, that there'll be a requirement that we enter into a contract with NextStage to help us, uh, design and create the program and put it into, uh, an electronic, electronic application process. And then to talk about, uh, the review process and the duties that they would perform in that arena. And so in the discussion of the creation of the program as we have in here is you can ask, you can either give EDA the authority to fine tune it and make the choice. And then we advertise from there, or you can ask EDA to take a look at it and make a recommendation back to you. That's your choice as to how much control you want to try to have in this. I mean, it's a matter of whether you trust the EDA board as an advisory board that they'll put this together in the best light and you'll have opportunities for input into that. Whether you trust that group to do something of this nature or whether you're going to attempt to try to do that yourself. And in reality, and taking a look at it is that it's not going to be where either the EDA or you individually will be taking a look at handpicking or hand selecting all of the eligible applicants. In, in the end, the intent would be Excuse me?
Give me one, Sean, we're confident that the EDA is capable of doing it. That's really not the question that I asked you. I just asked you at what process are we going to do it in? And at what time do we say to Pat, go ahead and post, um, that you guys really need to get in here and have all the paperwork together for, um, so that the EDA can make that decision. I'm not, I'm not questioning whether the EDA is competent or not. They're way more competent than I am. They're bankers. So they should be able to figure that out. So I wasn't really doing, going that way with it, Mike. I was trying to say, what process does it have to go in? When does my, or Pat post it? And, um, the next EDA meeting, are you going to need to post that tomorrow?
I, I don't have all those answers for you tonight.
First, the first step is for the council to approve. If they want to approve this 100,000, 108,000 is the first step. If that gets approved, Mike is going to talk to Brent Cost, who is the president of the EDA and call for a special meeting because we're all in the same boat that we know time is of essence. Once that gets, that meeting gets set and posted and posted as a special council meeting, because obviously some council members want to be in on that Zoom call, then we can probably answer some of these questions, Rick. Because then we have to, DDA would have to approve the contract with this third party and see if there's any changes that need to be made on the application. If not, we start moving forward on that process to get the process moving. But tonight, all we're looking for is approval from the council to put 108,000 aside for, of the CARES money to be used to help out local businesses.
All right, I'll move to approve.
Hold on, Rick, one second. Go ahead, Mike.
Or, or whether you want to make that more now upfront that will determine.
Well, no, wait, no, wait, because you guys keep saying timing is of the essence.
Rick, hold on here. Let Mike finish.
You know, that will be part of the, the terms and the layout of the program in, in how we're able to convey what we're planning to do. Are we going to simply do these as $5,000 loans? Or do we really want to look at doing something larger at 10? Part of that all needs to kind of be determined upfront as we go to advertising the program. And as EDA talks about it, those are some of the parameters. As you can see in here, we're going to need to have kind of already ironed out, um, as we try to put that together.
All right. I, I must have understood, misunderstood because I thought you just said that that's what the EDA was going to do.
If, if the council only allocates 100,000 from the discussions that we've had, that would enable them to do either 20 at 5,000 or 10 at 10,000. And, and part of that question and taking a look at that to create that program is based on the allocation that the council is wanting to set aside and how much, uh, assistance that you really want to get out into the business community.
So if we make this first action, um, and, um, just for an example, because Maggie just had a great idea that we have 100,000 in reserve. So how can we do that all by November? I just don't get your timing.
The, the, the timing is that we haven't got the funds, but we're, we're expecting the full allocation to come in here shortly so that we would have all funds on hand in order to be able to do this program. So then we would probably have, I'm guessing, likely, uh, and I'm just talking off the top of my head, a two-week application process. All of those applications come in, uh, they've got to be reviewed. And then based on the review of that, then hopefully we will know how we're going to make those awards because we're going to need to talk about that before we kick the program out. Because it's my bet that many of those businesses and taking a look at, if they're going to take the time to go through and apply and do it, well, how is the city going to distribute those monies? So we're going to have to have and vet, we're going to have to vet that issue before we really advertise the program.
Would it be better, Mike, if we just said up to 200,000?
Well, well, the allocate, the allocation is fine, but we're going to need to determine, determine upfront. You know, what are the terms of the loan that we're providing? This is a forgivable grant ultimately. Is that going to be five? Is that 10,000? And what's our general goal of what we're wanting to do? And that goal, depending on the size of what you do, is really based on or dependent upon what kind of allocation of monies do you want to set aside to begin with? And how broad of an impact that we want to try to be.
Okay.
And again, again, my thing is
Just for the record, I withdraw my, my motion and, um,
Hold on, I, I just don't want to allocate more money and then all of a sudden we need it for city department expenses. You know, I think that's why we were conservative with the 100,000. Now, if we get to the point that there's an additional 100,000, we can do a phase two.
Okay.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like the PPP money. You know, you get the money and then you have to fill out the, the form afterwards if you have to give any of it back. And this is a similar program with the CARES is we've been allocated 600, 6,000. When all said and done, we have to show them how we use it. If it's all eligible and we use the whole 600, 6,000, we don't have to pay any of it back. But if we only use 500,000, we have to give 100,000 back.
But Mayor, when you look at those different areas, as we take a look at the categories or the eligible type of uses, you know, the economic support within the community is you can decide that you want to make an impact on the community of the economic level that as policymakers, you think you want to. If we can backfill behind that, then great. And hopefully we're going to come up to that. And, and maybe it's worth doing more upfront as part of this to the business community as even, even while we're trying to find things to use some of the balance of the monies for. So it's, it's the council's desire and, uh, policy choice whether you want to make a larger share of those funds available to help businesses than any of the alternative things that we might come up with.
Yeah, and that's true. We can say, we can earmark 200,000 for this and, and use it all. And if we needed 400,000 or 500,000 for the city, well, then the city would have to take care of 100,000 out of their cash flow reserves.
Well, it's, it's not as if any of the expenses were right now. In a number of cases, there may be reimbursement of items that, uh, we have spent since March 15.
Right.
Or there could be other expenses that we can identify that if it complies with the requirements and it has not been budgeted, uh, that we're able to expend funds on. So like, like we showed you on page 15, we don't have the list with the dollars. And in fact, one of the items on it that, uh, Ken already has found out, uh, is probably the top one on our, on our list is that it's not likely feasible and plausible because it doesn't meet the threshold of all the requirements. So we've, we've simply been trying to, uh, brainstorm, um, and through discussions today, we're trying to see what other cities have, are expending or planning to expend funds on to see if there's any ideas on things that we haven't thought about or would be eligible uh, as kind of a sharing to make sure we're not missing things. One of the things you don't see on the list is that, uh, we'll likely have a number of expenses that the golf course incurred uh, that we're going to be able to add to the list, uh, and/or to reimburse because of the extra steps that they had to undertake to, uh, to deal with some of the, the COVID-19 stuff. So we're still trying to put together that list and, uh, identify the reasons and the cost, uh, and make a determination whether we think it's eligible or not.
Hey, Mike, this is Maggie. Um, so there's one area that I had thought about, and that's the aquatic and fitness center facility because there are expenses there, um, for extra sanitization, uh, barriers put up, for member check-in and that sort of thing. So, um, if, add that to your list and, and, um, I don't think that the school was allocated some monies. I, I ran into Sandy Lynn, uh, today. And, um, they were allocated some monies, but it doesn't sound like a lot. But of course, we're going to share it in the expense of the facility getting ready, uh, to allow members in. So, uh, we could probably get a breakout of what that is.
Thanks, Maggie. That's absolutely, uh, a, a great area that, uh, where we're a partner in that, that we can certainly participate in likely.
Okay, so let's proceed with this now. Um, any other questions or anything, uh, in regarding to the council approving this allocation of 108,000? Okay. If not, then I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the allocation of the 108,000 for the initial startup of using the CARES funds, uh, for economic development.
Mayor, can I add on?
Second.
That I, I would. Mayor, can I add on to that? Like that if available, an additional $100,000 would be considered?
Well, my motion is just for the initial phase. Now, if there's extra money, we can always do a phase two. Is the way I see it. Or do we want to, or, or do we want to allocate a maximum of 200,000?
I would like to see a maximum of 200,000 because that may give us an opportunity, depending on the number of applications of giving 5,000 or 10,000 or seven or eight thousand, um, you know, per business. So, I, I think 5,000 is very generous, but I don't look under the hood of the businesses and I don't know how far that would go for some of them.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to, uh, to have a maximum of 200,000 available, um, for the allocation of the CARES money for economic development.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I got a second by Maggie Bass.
Can you reread what that actual motion is? I'm a little confused.
The motion is, I'm, the motion is allocating up to 200,000, a minimum of 108,000 with a maximum of 200,000 if available to, from the CARES money for economic development through, uh, this loan forgiveness program that we're looking at.
Okay. And if we happen to have 300,000, we would just do the additional as a phase two then, or?
If there was additional funds, I think we'd have to address it at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
And as, uh, Maggie, is that fine with the way the motion was read?
It is. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I got a motion by myself, Chuck Nicoli, a second by Maggie Bass. Yep.
The, 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 the cost to contract with, uh, the entity that, uh, I mentioned in there, um, the next stage is that on the first 100,000, their administrative cost for handling the loans on the first 100 is 6,000 plus another two to redo all of the paperwork. So there's, uh, 8,000 additional under the contract that would have to go to them. On the next 100,000, there likely is another 6,000. So for every 100,000, we've got some monies in there. So if you went to the full 200,000, that really needs to be 214,000?
If you want to cover all the expenses with that.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you say 200,000, then obviously Yeah, I mean, if you, if you say 200,000, then obviously, if we are going to max out, we really could only give 186,000.
Or you just put the 14 on, on top of that, excuse me, the 12. And then the, the minimum would be the 108, to be able to pick up the cost of administering the program up to the 100 and the 200,000 level.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to, uh, change those figures. Is anyone, any other questions on that? Maggie, are you still willing to second that motion?
I am, I'm on board. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay. Rick, how do you vote? Rick? Nod your head if it's a yes.
Rick votes aye.
Okay, thank you. Maggie?
Rick votes aye.
Aye.
Maggie is an aye. Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck votes aye, so that motion passes. Uh, with that in, in mind, Mike, if you want to kind of touch base with Brent tomorrow and see, uh, a timing, you know, early next week where we could get a special EDA meeting?
I will.
And then all, obviously, since we have some council members who are going to join us, it has to be a special council meeting also. Thank you. Okay, next. Um, Mike, are you going to start introducing this? And is Scott going to kind of chime in on, uh, the tobacco?
You've probably heard enough from me already, and maybe I'll just turn it over to Scott. Uh, the, most of it's out of their arena anyway, and just let him talk to you about, uh, uh, that with the governor signing the, uh, law back in, uh, May, uh, we now have to, where they had to, uh, enable the Minnesota law to align with the national law passed in December, uh, we now need to essentially do the same thing with the state. And so I'll let Scott kind of walk you through, uh, what's in front of you and, uh, what's required of us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, I'll jump in real quick here with, on top of what Mike has. Mike's got, in his materials, the, his staff memorandum, as well as there's an email from David Anderson of my office, it kind of hits the high points of what's there. And what you need to know is that the revisions to the code that are proposed via this ordinance are the minimum to bring our code into compliance with what the state statute did, and to bring it into compliance with where the federal regulations are at this point in time, as to the 21-year-old, 21-year age limit on this. Um, we did not go beyond it and deal with other aspects like flavored tobaccos, um, cigar pricing, things like that, which other communities have done, and certainly, you can direct us to do that. We could bring it back if you so desire. But we took the city's existing ordinance and brought it consistent with what both state and federal are. So that's what you have before you. Um, beyond what, um, Mike discussed briefly and what's in his materials, um, there was and is a sample ordinance that, that has been proposed and floating around in many communities, which again, is much more restrictive and does take those issues that I discussed into consideration, uh, does regulate them. We have not done that. We haven't proposed that. That would be up to you, and if you want staff and city attorney to do that, we certainly can. But again, it's the bare minimum to bring us into compliance, and I can answer any further questions you have.
So what, when you talk about the flavored tobacco and that stuff, that still is required to be 21 to purchase it, correct?
Correct, correct. There have been other communities that have gone beyond that and banned it, uh, and said they don't want that type of product. Um, there has been some pushbacks from the industry on that as well, but the reality is there are cities that are doing that.
Anyone have any? Go ahead, Maggie.
Scott, this is Maggie. Um, I was reading through, uh, the, the regulation, um, the red line version.
Okay.
And, uh, I was not able, and maybe it's just because I don't have LexisNexis, but I wasn't able to find Minnesota statute 257 dot 351. Uh, this is talking about, um, the Indian community and using tobacco as part of a traditional, uh, ceremony.
Right.
Um, it's typically subdivision nine. So I, I, I was just very interested in, in why that group of people was called out as opposed to other, um, potential religious groups that might use tobacco as part of their ceremony. Um, and, and what I'm looking at is, it, it appears that that particular statute was repealed, but again, I could be totally wrong.
No, I will double-check on the statutory reference, but the facts are that our state statute doesn't apply to the Indian communities, the Native Americans. Uh, it is driven by federal law. The federal T-21 law does apply to them, though. Um, and it is for that purpose, but not the state statute. And that's why this is in here from our original code. But I'll, I'll review the site to make sure it's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, I guess I'm looking for anyone else on the council, feedback regarding, um, do you feel that just upgrading, updating our ordinance to meet state and federal statutes and laws uh, is sufficient, and is that as far as we want to go?
I do.
Rick here.
Um, thin question. Maybe this is a silly question, but why wouldn't we then just point to the state law as opposed to our particular regulation? Or is it because it trickles down to various local businesses that sell the product? Um-
Yeah, there, there is the argument that we don't have to change anything. And in fact, that if some of the materials you have say that state law would preempt our ordinance, the bottom line is if we have something in our code, we want it to be correct, so it's easier to enforce for the police and other folks. Um, there are some changes we had to do relative to compliance checks and things like that, which we do have to make. But the overall 21 age limit, it applies whether we change our ordinance at all. If you decide not to do anything, it still is there. Again, we're trying to bring it in to be most correct, but you do have the compliance aspects and compliance checks, things like that, that we needed to correct as well.
Great. Thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions or comments?
Chuck, I would point out that, uh, in the consideration, one of the requirements under the statute for the council, that, uh, the council's not allowed to adopt a final ordinance, uh, pending, uh, if you introduced this tonight, we are required to, uh, send information out, mail out information to all of the tobacco license holders, and, uh, we have to provide them with at least 30 days' notice that the council is contemplating these changes prior to the council formally adopting it. So as I stated in my memo, that, uh, if you approve, uh, the introduction tonight, we would go forward with sending out that information, but would not have the, the second reading and/or final adoption uh, until the September 8th council meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions for Scott or Mike?
This is Bruce Scott. I'm wondering if you could just, uh, I, I can probably find it in here, but what is the changes that occurred to tobacco delivery devices? And the, um, I forget what the name of that is, the oils or the-
The vaping?
Vaping products. How is that treated differently under, now under our ordinance?
We have changed the definition to include all those items as being regulated, which is consistent with state law and what's there right now. So we have added those definitions in. Uh, that was one of the updates that occurred because of the statute, the statutory change on the state level. So, and if you look at tobacco-related devices and, and the definitions of 117.02, that's where it's included, so it would be covered under this ordinance. Does that address what you're asking?
So Bruce, it's on page 10 of the handout. The top of the page.
Yep.
And when you say we're making it, uh, as a minimum, some jurisdictions are being more restrictive in that particular area as well?
Um, arguably, they may have more detailed definitions, I suppose. Where the more restrictive nature has been, has been with the flavored tobaccos and things like that. Um, those types of products, this concern has been, they've been marketed to certain populations, um, some communities. And I know one of the T-21 groups was very much advocating that those also be banned outright in communities, and some communities have done so.
Scott, are you aware of any pending lawsuits against any of those communities?
Yeah, not that I'm involved in, no. Um, I have had one community that has gone with a more restrictive approach. Um, I've had some that have debated it and not done that as of now. Uh, that may be a change that comes legislatively because there's discussions that have occurred with that. I do know that the industry was proposing some types of litigation, but I haven't been involved in anything related to that right now.
Okay, thank you. So do we want to proceed, um, with the changes and introduce this as the first reading, um, tonight, and then the process of producing the letters and all the public hearings and everything, uh, to, to move forward? Or do we want to do any, any changes? Or do we want to have Scott do any, um, more research or anything on anything regarding this?
Chuck, this is Sean. I'm fine with just matching state law. I mean, we, we're legally bound to do it anyway, so I would just propose that we, uh, just approve this amendment as written, which brings us in compliance with state law.
Okay. Bruce, are you fine with that?
Yeah, I, I support. If Sean is, uh, proposing the adoption of the ordinance, I would second that motion.
I was.
And I just, I would just need to add that, uh, pending any correction in the Minnesota statute reference, uh, in section 117 dot 06 subsection E, or I guess C in this case, uh, Scott.
Yeah, let's see. We will bring that back.
Okay, so I got a motion by Sean Ryan, a second by Bruce Wolf. Um, any other comments? Okay, if not, Rick? How do you vote? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Maggie?
Aye.
Maggie, you vote aye?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck is aye, so that passes 5-0, so the first reading has passed to move forward uh, with the, um, issue that Scott's going to look in on that, uh, reference to the state statute. Okay. COVID. And, and mask. Um, obviously, our last meeting, we kind of shelved this, uh, maybe believing that the governor was going to make an, uh, an executive order regarding masks in, in public. That has not happened as of yet. I'm sure many are aware that Coburns, as of today, uh, is requiring masks in both their liquor store and their grocery store. And, uh, well, obviously, you know, Walmart, Hy-Vee, uh, Walgreens, CVS, these are all, uh, national companies that are starting to, uh, target, I think, August 1st, is starting to require masks, um, in their facilities. So, uh, how do we want to proceed with the mask is, issue? Do we want to, uh-
Well, this is Maggie, and I have received some additional emails, uh, so I'm getting a mix of, uh, require masks or don't require masks. Um, I am not in favor of requiring masks. I am in favor, however, of leaving it into the business owner's hands to regulate who, and, and, you know, who comes into their establishments, and if a mask is required or not, or some other type of protocol. And I say that because, uh, obviously, I'm seeing an uptick in people wearing masks. And I, and I saw this with this weekend when I was out and about. So I think people themselves are taking that personal responsibility and wearing a mask. Secondly, business owners know their clientele. They know if they're able to have an establishment that can provide social distancing. And they also know that they're probably losing a sector of people not coming into their establishments because masks are not required. So I will suspect that other business owners are going to follow suit and say masks are required to get as many people in their establishments that are going to feel safe to go in and, and purchase or use the services. Salons, I believe, are already, um, required for patrons and, um, the stylists to wear masks. Uh, and there might be some other businesses, I don't know if it affects like massage therapy or that sort of thing, but there are already, um, some businesses that, um, have additional oversight. Again, I'm going to, uh, say, I am not in favor of the city council saying that masks are mandated. I have a feeling something will be coming that down from the state level, and that's the tact that I want to take. I just don't think that it is our decision to regulate the people in our community of how they choose to, uh, navigate in this time.
Maggie, if that was a motion, if that was a motion, Maggie, I would second it.
It wasn't yet, Rick, we're just kind of in a discussion phase.
Yeah, I realize that, Chuck, but, um, I'm having problems. It's, it cuts in and out, and I only hear half, and I, and I'm not getting on when I want to talk. So it's, it's like, I would second that if it was a motion, that's how I feel about it. Carry on.
Okay, thank you.
I had some comments if I, if I can, if it's okay?
Yep, go ahead, Bruce.
Well, in, my thoughts are, and I wrote, jotted down a few things, I wish I would not need to be in this situation, but I, I support the, the use of face masks as a requirement in public spaces because of the public health benefits, the benefits to our local businesses and the economy and the local school district. I don't want to be in this position, but I feel it's appropriate and need by the city to take action to the, for the benefit of the community's public health and the community's economic interests. Public health, reducing community transmission is a strategy to reduce the public health risk of COVID-19 in the city of New Prague. I'd be, I believe it has shown that the wearing of face masks is an effective means to reducing community transmission and therefore preventing COVID-19. The degree of how effective can be argued, but I believe it is face mask usage, uh, face mask usage is accepted as an important tool to reduce transmission. Um, similar to the behavior of covering one's mouth or nose when someone coughs or seizes, has been a longtime method of limiting droplets and aerosols. Uh, face mask is extension of the same idea. So I do feel that it is within the city's purview and, um, area because it's a public health issue, not, not necessarily just an individual or business. Economically, active spread or renewed spread of the virus, which we, uh, we're involved in in New Prague, means that local business recovery may not be improved, maintained, or even achieved. Face masking helps to reduce some risks to the business community, risk of business closure or interruption caused by quarantine or ill employees and vendor interruptions, risk to keeping businesses open, um, having to dial back again to previous business restrictions, helps to reduce the burden of adopting and administering face mask policies on businesses and their employees, reduces liability exposure of those businesses that don't initiate their own- reduces liability exposure of those businesses that don't initiate their own face mask policies and may be subject to litigation by employees who get sick or customers. It reduces health risks to employees and customers, improvement in public health that will improve economic growth and viability. From the school standpoint, reduced community transmission will reduce risk of not being able to open or to keep the schools open or having students return or stay in school. Some people have contacted me about the issue of individual or business discretionary. My wife can attest that I don't like being told what to do, so I'm very sympathetic to this issue. But this is a public health issue, not, and individuals, businesses can't extend past their own authorities. So from a public standpoint, they can't address the issue. And therefore, I think it's appropriate to look at it from a public health standpoint, similar to smoking restrictions or driving restrictions and things like that. So I would stand in support of a face mask policy for the city and would encourage your consideration.
Bruce, are you looking at both indoors and outdoors?
I didn't get a chance to read the suggested, or at least the, some of them, but I think it refers to indoor areas, and that's probably what I'd be thinking of.
Then I would also, I've got two questions, and that is, do we have jurisdiction over the public schools, you know, to mandate that everyone in a public school system wear a mask? And secondly, what about athletic or gym facilities in particular? It's extremely dangerous for some of the population to wear a mask while exercising because you don't get enough oxygen.
I think the exceptions on almost all the policies that I've looked at would include fitness centers, gymnasiums, and things like that, swimming and those, things like that. As far as the school, I can't answer that question. My reference to school is really, if we have more community transmission, it's going to affect the ability for schools to have direct student teaching or learning and may require a distance learning again.
Yeah, I know, I've read some mixed, uh, the other cities that have passed a mandate. I've read some mix on gyms in particular, where if you can have social distancing, you don't wear a mask, or if you're a participant, you have to wear a mask. So, you know, it, we, you know, again, I'm not in support of this, and I, I will vote, I will vote nigh. But if, if for some reason the mandate were to go through, I think you really have to give it a lot of thought as to in what spaces. And, you know, again, we've got this arbitrary range of children under two, children under 10, children under five. You know, then the people that have health issues that can't wear a mask, well, how do you identify those people? If you mandate a mask in Coburns, that means if there's somebody that's on oxygen and then they can't wear a mask, well, they just can't go grocery shopping. You know, so we just have to be very thoughtful about it. And that's why I'm really all for people taking personal responsibility and the businesses to determine how they want their patrons to enter their establishments.
I got a question.
All for, go ahead, Rick.
We're a small-town government, you know, and we don't have health departments here. The county's got a health department, the state's got a health department. For us to sit and go over particularly, or whatever, is it really our responsibility to mandate to our residents anything like that? I mean, doesn't that jump way beyond our authority? I mean, who are we to go and say that? We don't have a health department to rely on. If it was so important, why wouldn't the county and the state do it? Why would they throw it back on us? So we're supposed to jump in because they're not doing their job? I'm done.
Well, Rick, the information in our packet indicated that the city council does have the ability to do this under some emergency powers. And, you know, therefore, we've seen other cities do the same. So I don't know that it's being, the burden is being put on us. I think we, as the council, are choosing to address the situation, still not knowing what the governor is going to do. We had perhaps hoped to hear something sooner, but the chatter right now is that he's trying to get some additional buy-in before a decision is made. So, you know, we do have the ability to make the decision, so hopefully that's answered your question.
Sean, what's your take?
So we take, well, we take the political heat then. Are you hearing me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole question, I understand, we have the, we, we could do that as a small-town government, but I'm still not getting heard, am I?
No.
We can do that as a small-town government. But, what's that? I can't, I can't tell the residents to do something that they're not going to do. If they say they don't want to wear a mask, they're not going to wear it. How are you going to enforce this?
Well, that certainly is a tricky deal, but certainly, there's a lot of people that drive on the highways at 60 or 65 that don't comply with the regulations. There's certainly people that smoke where they're not supposed to smoke. You know, there are always going to be enforcement issues. That doesn't mean there's not a benefit to the, to the, to the action. But that's my reply to that.
Okay, Sean, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I want to say all three of the other council members that spoke, bits and pieces that I agree with every one of them. Personally, I wear a mask. Personally, I'm happy to hear that Coburns is going to require them today. That's a business decision left up to the businesses. My goal would be that I'm not going to force the residents of New Prague who can, for reasons that Maggie outlined, maybe there's health issues. At this point, I really feel this is more of a state issue. I don't like when cities piecemeal things and you drive 10 minutes out of town and, and there's a different law on a major health initiative like this, much like we debated going to 21 when other cities were jumping from 18 to 21 before the federal government and before the state allowed or changed it as well. So my opinion right now is I'm thinking there's going to be something that's going to come down from the state in the next week or two. I would encourage everybody to wear masks. I believe in the science that Bruce alluded to. Personally, I wear them, but I can't enforce my will on somebody else's if they don't want to wear it. But I give the business owners, and I wouldn't even go as far as saying I would vote for the, any of our city-owned properties to require face masks if, if open, when, if and when they do open up to the general public. But that's something we control. I can't go down the street and pick and choose the private businesses and tell their owners that they, if they're comfortable talking to customers without a face mask on, that's their prerogative. That's my take on it.
Okay. Well, which way do we want to go? I mean, my opinion is, I'm kind of similar to Sean's. I think face masks are, are a benefit. And I think they should be worn, especially if you're in a building. And, and I think the, you know, I, I agree that outside, and if you're social distancing, you don't really need to have a face mask on. So that's my opinion, but... So now, we've got basically five different true opinions. How do we want, which direction do we want to go? Do we want to table it like we did last time? Do we want to make a decision? I'm open for suggestions.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we do not mandate masks and that we wait until the state makes a decision.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Maggie Bass to not mandate masks, and I got a second by Rick. Before we add any more comments, Mike, can you share what you told me on the phone regarding what other communities around Scott County are doing in regarding the mask?
I did ask that of my neighboring administrators in a meeting that we had earlier today. And let's see, that, just for your benefit, Jordan, is they have it under discussion tonight, but they indicated that likely that they would be a no. Shakopee is a no, they're waiting for the governor's choice. Savage, they intend to probably bring it up in a retreat next week, although their emergency resolution has ended. And so they're not sure whether that would require some type of proclamation, resolution, or ordinance. And so they're not certain that they're going to do anything at this point. Prior Lake is similar to Shakopee, that their answer was no. And Elko New Market was no, waiting for the governor. And Bell Plain, no, they're not interested in adopting one. So it doesn't appear that any of our neighboring cities within Scott County, at least at this point from earlier this morning, are intending to do anything at this time.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure everyone heard that because you and I talked about it this afternoon, so. Okay. So I got a motion by Maggie and a second by Rick. Any other comments?
Could you repeat that motion, just to make sure I've got that correctly, to not mandate masks?
Exactly, the motion is not mandate masks.
Are other people allowed to make comments during this time?
Uh, no.
Mike, I couldn't hear Maggie on that, what she said.
I, I didn't, I didn't get the end of it either. Could you make sure I, I get that, Maggie, to not mandate masks and to what else?
And to wait until a decision is made at the state level. Were you able to get that?
Yes, I have that.
Thank you.
Mayor, you are able, if you have interest, you, now that I have that, so there's a motion on the table.
Right, I got a motion on the table. I'm willing to take some public opinion now, and...
Could I ask for some clarification on the motion? What, what is meant by, when a decision is made, if the governor decides not to do it, what would happen then?
My, my motion is, this is the end of the discussion. We do not mandate masks and that we will follow what the decision is made at the state level.
Okay, so no matter what the decision is at the state level, that doesn't, okay. I think I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, is it okay to take public comment?
Sure, that's up to the council. You have that right.
Okay. Okay, before we vote on this, I'm willing to open up the floor to any public comments. If you want to speak, please state your name and your address, and just limit yourself to just a couple minutes, please.
This is Kristen Blinkensab, 1100 Columbus Avenue South, New Prague. And my question is, is that if you did vote yes to this, how do you intend on policing this? You have to have a actual plan on how you're going to accuse people of wearing or not wearing a mask.
Well, right now, Kristen, the motion says we're not mandating masks, and there's a second. And we're just taking some public comment before we vote, so. You know, we're, we're, we don't have a motion that states we're mandating masks. We have a motion that states we're not mandating masks.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment?
This is Kirtzjaret, 603 Doherty Avenue Southeast. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
There are so many things, there are so many things that, you know, go around with this. I think it's up to the businesses to mandate whether or not you wear a mask or not, not up to the city. I could be walking down the street and I guess pulled over by a policeman who may or may not know the rules. Never happened before. I would like to leave that up to the businesses. If you are a concealed carry holder, by state law, you cannot wear a mask. If you have a health issue, you cannot wear a mask, and you cannot be asked what your health issue is via HIPAA laws. So there are many things to get around this. I, I agree with the motion not to make it mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just wanted to add that I also agree that we should not mandate the masks, and I agree with Kurt's comments as well.
Okay, thank you, Kristen.
This is Chris Solhide, 7,000 Union Hill Boulevard. And I just wanted to say that I agree with all the comments made by Maggie and the other people on the meeting. I don't think it's appropriate to mandate masks, and I would ask that the council vote yes on this motion to not mandate masks.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, that one went way too fast for me. Name and address again, please.
Sorry, Chris Solhide, and it's 7,000 Union Hill Boulevard.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oh, I got to do a roll call. Rick?
Aye, aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Chuck says aye, so the motion passes 4-1. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and comments on this. I know it's a kind of emotional topic, and... Mike, do you have anything else you want to bring up about, over the COVID?
Uh, no, nothing major yet tonight, Chuck.
Okay, as far as you, we're still running City Hall and all our departments in similar fashion?
Uh, mostly that, I think the PD is the last one and the utilities, the ladies in the office. We're back, otherwise operations-wise. Everybody else, we're looking at, we were, we were looking at having open City Hall about July 6th, and then we ran into a number of things internally with some exposures and issues to COVID-19. So we kind of held it off at this point. But we're looking at trying to maybe getting back and trying to get City Hall open, maybe here by the end of July, the 1st of August. That, we're, we're still trying to say, stay safe, that I think many of our neighboring communities are probably open. We've done some installations of things in the building that I think will help us when we get ready to open. So we're, we're just trying to make sure that we're all ready to go here, probably in a week or another, 10 days or so.
Okay. Thank you. Just keep us apprised of it, if it happens sooner than that. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the consent items. Anyone have any questions on anything in the consent section of the packet? I know Patty did a great job of producing financials for the departments through June, and... And I know she did send an email saying that if anyone had any specific questions, you could email her and she'd respond too, so.
Thank you, Patty.
Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent. Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Rick Siler. If there's no other comments. Okay, Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck, aye, so the consent agenda passes 5-0. We're at the fun part. Ken, do you have anything in the miscellaneous?
The only thing I wanted to comment on briefly was the change in the polling place from St. Lence Parish Activity Center. I'm not sure how much the council knows about this, but we had notification middle to late last week on their need to utilize the PAC for classrooms for the school operations at the church. And we had to make a quick emergency change on our location back to the Fitness and Aquatic Center, which is where the elections had historically taken place for the few elections prior to moving over to the PAC. And they were very gracious in allowing us to do that for the primary and the general. And we're in the process of getting notifications out to all the residents right now via postcard. I'll be putting that on social media or website and trying to avoid any further confusion. I believe Patrick is going to run a story on this as well. So, just one of those things that came up. I'm sure we're not the only place in the state that's had to do this. Obviously, St. Lence has a need to make sure they can operate effectively as well. So it was just a good thing that we had a backup that we could round up on a very short notice. And again, this is under the emergency polling location change because we're technically later than statute would normally allow. But talked with the county elections people and actually the state elections director from the Secretary of State's office also provided feedback on how to get it done. Everybody will be notified. And we'll, we'll get through it.
You're going to have it at the aquatic center then?
Yeah, the gymnasium area at the Fitness and Aquatic Center, which is the same gymnasium it had been prior to moving to the Fitness and Aquatic, prior to moving to the Parish Activity Center at St. Lence. We have a lot of signage we have to put up at both locations to notify people to change. So we got our work cut out for us, but we'll make it, we'll make it work.
I did notice there was a notice in the utility bill also.
And Scott County did send one out to all the registered voters. I received ours today.
Perfect, perfect. I know, we got that out as quick as we could last week, and I was actually on vacation, so I got to give Patty Solheim a lot of credit for taking that and being sure we got that out on very, very short notice.
Anything else, Ken?
Nope, that's all I got.
I see the zip line is going forward in the park.
Yeah, the, it's not the Veterans Memorial. I think a lot of comments on Facebook about that, but that is a zip line sidewalk surround and the equipment should show up on or around August 1st, and then we'll get that in. So right on the schedule that we were looking for on that.
All right, well, good. Thank you. Michael, you got anything else?
I can't wait to try it.
Scott, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I can't wait to try it, guys.
I do not, no.
All right, well, thanks again for joining us tonight, so. Does anyone in the public arena, I mean, there's Patricia, Chris, and Kristen that are still out there? Do you want to make any additional comments before we adjourn? Okay. Rick, do you have anything else to add?
No additional.
Okay. Maggie?
Nothing.
All right, Patrick?
Yeah, the work that's going on on Main Street at, I believe it's the the water plant, the electrical plant. Is that old steam pipes are being taken out or what?
It's a realignment of some of the existing water lines that that we had challenges and troubles with. And so effectively, we're rerouting and trying to get ready for the connections that'll come with the Main Street project next year.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, Sean, anything else to add?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Bruce?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, I do not have anything, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so we're adjourned. If everyone want to take a five-minute, we'll get back to our closed session that we need to do. And we'll get through that real quick and then enjoy the evening.
Chuck, is that a separate dial-up or do we just stay online?
No, it's, there's a new access code. It should be on your packet.
Okay, thank you. I'll find it.
Yeah.